Through the end of September as compared to last year, the numbers are down considerably. Two of the biggest stats to mention are our actual shooting incidents where somebody was shot. We refer to those as bullet-to-body shootings. Those are down from 22 through the end of September last year, down to nine through the end of September this year. And we have not had a single incident in October so far where somebody was struck by gunfire. And keep in mind, these are within the city limits. And then the other one is the actual total number of shooting victims. What I just gave you was incidents. Obviously, one incident could have more than one person shot in that incident. So the number of shooting victims are down from 27 through the end of September last year to 10 through the end of September this year. So just wanted to mention those, and I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
So I'm sorry, Chief, could I ask just one more statistical question before we turn it over to Cheryl? Do you know offhand the number of those that resulted in death?
We've had four homicides this year, and the four homicides we've had in the city are all gun-related. One of the four ruling has not been made through the prosecutor's office, but very likely will be deemed to be a self-defense case, in my opinion. The other three, we have made arrests and individuals are currently in custody, waiting court procedures on those three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hitt, Mayor Mahoney, council members, and city staff. Hello. I am Cheryl Ragland, the Group Violence Intervention Project Coordinator for the City of Jackson. I handed out a packet to each of you that you can read at your leisure, if you like. So let's get started. GBI is a three-part strategy. I know people call it a program, but it's actually a strategy that focuses on the groups that are at the highest risk with the intention to keep those within those groups alive, safe, and out of prison. It brings together a partnership of law enforcement, community members, and social service providers with a common goal, but with distinct roles. The partnership directly communicates the core messages to group members: credible community, moral message against violence, genuine offer of help and support for those who want it, and then there's the credible law enforcement message about the consequences for further violence. Mayor Mahoney, did you have a question?
No, I had a question for you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Wanted to address it if you did. There are core GVI elements: to identify in real time small numbers of the highest risk of people and groups, to establish open lines of direct and respectful communication with them, to establish clear standards against violence and for safety and success for people influential with those that are at the highest risk, and then lastly, to offer meaningful support to keep, again, people safe, alive, and out of prison. So who do we need? Who are the partners within this strategy? The law enforcement partners are what I consider, going forward now, the core group. We work with the sheriff's office, with, of course, JPD, probation and parole agencies. We also work with the prosecutor's office, the corrections department, and our local ATF. You have your community members, families of victims, even ex-offenders, former group members, faith-based leaders, and influential community members as well. And then the third piece is that social service partnership: services that provide mentoring, trauma care, reentry services, outreach services, education, and employment services. Those are the three entities to the three-pronged strategy of GVI. So GVI has a core message: we'll help you if you let us, and we want to help you, but we will stop you if you make us, and we want you safe, out of jail, and alive, and out of prison. So, let's give you a progress update. As Director Hitt said, I started in June, June 6th, as a matter of fact. So once I was aboard, the National Network for Safe Communities, going forward, referred to as NNSC, they assign a senior field advisor. We've been assigned, from Cook County, Illinois, Deborah Higgins. She and I meet every Monday, initially to go over what the responsibilities of the role would be, various facets of training that she would give to me, and weekly updates as to what we were doing here in the City of Jackson. She is assigned until the contract ends. I also meet weekly on Mondays with statewide GVI project managers that Deborah oversees, and we discuss and we update each other on what we're all working on. We bounce ideas off of each other, and a lot of time is spent on becoming acclimated to the GVI processes and procedures to use going forward in the month of June. The following items are a result of those processes, under the direction of Director Hitt and Deputy Chief Garcia. The GVI Group Problem Analysis Refresh Audit Report, that's an original two-part problem analysis of violence dynamics in Jackson that was conducted originally in 2019 by NNSC. They used compiled data from January 2014 through December of 2018. Once I was aboard, NNSC wanted to refresh that audit, to have current data. So this time, they used compiled data that was from January of 2020 through June 30th of 2022. The purpose of a problem analysis audit, and that report, is to, one, identify all groups that contribute to the most serious violence in Jackson, and, two, identify the group conflicts that are most closely associated with violence and/or group-involved individuals. The audit was conducted on June 28th, and the final report was issued to Director Hitt and Deputy Chief Garcia in July. In the month of August, I worked with Aaron Dimnick to create a Group Violence Intervention webpage. And maybe some of you have seen this. The public can see this as well. It's out there at this point. I think it timed itself out. Nope, there it is. If you go to the webpage, the City of Jackson Police Department, you will see that there is a page that is devoted to group violence intervention. Nope, that part's not coming up. But you will see that if you go out there to that webpage. Aaron and I worked on the text, and we came up with that. We also created the probation and parole customer notification letter, which is in your packet, and all the services that are included. That's also in your packet. And there's a three-by-five social services card that is also in your packet that we give out. In the month of August, the GVI core team was put into place, and that consists of 10 members. After each member of the core team was selected and approved, I met with each of them personally to provide them an overview of GVI, then scheduled a collective core team meeting. That core team meets once per quarter. The GVI team are representatives from each entity in the GVI three-pronged strategy, consisting of and working in conjunction with law enforcement, ATF, social services, circuit court probation, MDOC parole, the county prosecutor's office, the county sheriff's office department, and the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Clueson. And there is city council representation as well. The second piece is the social services outreach. Those organizations are in place. They consist of the Department of Health and Human Services, LifeWaves, Michigan Works Southeast, and the Community Action Agency. In the month of September, NNSC was on-site to perform a two-day workshop training session. The workshop was attended by NNSC representatives, Deborah Higgins, who I spoke of before, and Paul Smith, who facilitated those work sessions, along with Jackson Police Department. Both the GVI core and organizational teams were there. Also in attendance was the Eastern District of Michigan U.S. Attorney Don Eisen and four of her colleagues. There was also representation from the City of Pontiac. They're looking to implement GVI there. It included their mayor and his coalition. Once this training was done in September, and we were trained on custom notifications, documentation, tracking measures, and the requirements that are needed for the role, then we were able to begin moving forward with different and various elements of the strategy. We've also been contacted by a news anchor, Georgia Ree Godfrey, Fox 56 in Lexington, Kentucky, and Director Hitt did an interview with her. So the word is getting around. We've also been contacted by members in Florida that are interested in implementing GVI there as well. So, for the fourth quarter between now and December, I will continue working with the circuit court probation and MDOC parole to perform monthly customer notifications. Currently, we have two circuit court probation custom notifications scheduled for later this week and more for next week. Beginning in November, I'll begin working with the county sheriff's department on their custom notification process. We meet with the faith-based leaders tomorrow morning, Wednesday morning, to provide an overview of GVI and their role as community leaders within the strategy itself. I'm also scheduled to meet and attend the juvenile probation staff meeting in November to work with their director and their agents to do custom notifications. I'll continue to partner with additional third-party social service agencies. And the most important thing, now that you've been updated, GVI gets rolled out to the public by the end of this week. In your packet, you will also see the letter that is used for a custom notification. That's in your packet as well. So if you have any questions, it's just a brief synopsis, a brief overview. I'll be here for the entire meeting, so if there are questions afterwards that, you know, you think of at a later time, let me know. But right now, do you have any questions?
Councils, do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Forgrave looks like he has a question.
Thanks. I just have one when you went over. First of all, thank you. I appreciate the work you've done.
You're welcome.
The question I have, are we at all concerned, and maybe that's not the right word, but the refreshed audit we did, the timeframe that we looked at was from 2020 to 2022, which falls squarely during the COVID pandemic.
Exactly.
Are we talking about doing another audit in the future, or are we going to be working with?
When that audit was completed, because that was a factor, I mean, we were, you know, those numbers did come from COVID, and Deborah did mention that she would probably want to do another one within another year or a year and a half. So that is on the horizon. She did mention that due to those circumstances. Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Danzy has a question. You don't.
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for the presentation.
You're more than welcome.
Last week, I was in Muskegon for a conference, and the last presentation I went to was about what we're doing here. And like I was saying, they have it in Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. And I know we're just getting started, but just listen to what's going on in the state. There's not too many cities that has this program. And I think we, I ain't gonna say far ahead, but we doing, I think, we on the right track to what we want to do. I think this probably should have happened a few years ago, but unfortunately it didn't. But I just appreciate everything that you're doing and staff is doing. And I know we got some hiring to do, but I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I just wanted to thank you, and keep doing what you're doing, girl.
Definitely. Councilmember Robinson, anything?
No, I don't. You did an excellent job on the presentation. I was gonna give you accolades at the end, but, you know, being a part of the GVI group, I really know that we are on track with trying to do and make a difference for the City of Jackson. So I greatly appreciate all that you do, and Director Hitt as well, to get this off the ground and make that difference. I love the little piece here. What was it? I had it open. I like that little slogan where we say, "safe, alive, and out of prison."
Right.
Those mean a lot in this program, and I think that will be a big plus for our community.
I agree.
I'd just like to close, if I could, with a quick, the last homicide we did in the city, Markeitha Smith was shot and killed outside a green food and beverage party store the end of August. And following that, we had a couple different intentional house fires involving Molotov cocktails, and we're pretty certain it was related to that retaliation, that incident. And Cheryl, John Willis, and the detective actually visited the home of Markeitha's, where he lived at, and spoke with his parents and some other family members that were there, kind of gave this GVI message. And following that, for the last, well, going on a month and a half now, we have not had another incident similar to that or retaliation that we know of related to that. So whether or not that contributed to this not having anything further, we don't know. But often, the incidents that don't happen, we just don't know about, so it's hard to gauge what you may be preventing out there. So I'm very excited about this strategy, and I'm excited to have Cheryl continue on. And I sincerely think we have an opportunity to make a big difference through this strategy.
Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much for your work. All right. That brings us to citizen comment number seven, because there are no public hearings today. Just want to start by reading the rules for our public comment section. Each speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing council. Number two, each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Number three, each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the city council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor may declare the speaker out of order. Number five, if a speaker is declared out of order by the mayor and refuses to cease and desist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Number six, each speaker may speak once under public comment and may not yield their time to others. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members and city staff, my name is Brian Wolf. I've been living at 310 South Webster for over 30 years. Right now, I have a tree in the boulevard right in front of my house, between the street and the sidewalk, that's been dead for over a year. I put in numerous requests upstairs to have it removed. The clerk upstairs said that I am on the list, and I'm supposed to be patient, because it's times to be patient. And I understand there's shortage of workers, and this is something that I feel needs attention. I have a few pictures here, if you're interested in pictures. But there's branches that are dead branches being held up by other branches in this tree hanging over our street. Whenever there's any kind of strong winds, these branches are constantly falling. My daughter had their mirror broken off by one branch, and there was actually a car running down, coming down the street that actually had to really stop because the branch fell in the street. My neighbors and I were constantly moving, clearing the street from these branches. I personally have witnessed a power line vigorously bouncing up and down because a branch had fallen on that wire. There's wires going through the tree, next to the tree. It's a nuisance. I'm just afraid now, I've been down at least a couple, twice upstairs, putting in a complaint. My neighbor next door, I just talked to him last weekend, he's been talking upstairs at least two or three times. And all we get from the city is that we need to be patient, that these things take time. Well, from June till now, and now, I'm just afraid that winter's gonna come, snow build up, this tree's gonna cause more damage to vehicles, houses, adjacent structures, something else. And to tell you the truth, sir, I don't know what else to do. Trying to prevent something from happening, further damage, but I just don't know what else to do. Thank you for your time.
Peter Bormuth.
Peter Borm with 142 West Pearl Street. I'd like to start by saying it's the election season, and I wanted to give my endorsements. The most important thing you can do is vote yes on Proposition 3. This ensures the right of women going forward. It puts in our Constitution their fundamental right to bodily integrity and control over their menstrual cycle. Please vote yes on Proposition 3. For Congress, I'm endorsing Bart Goldberg. We've had Tim Walberg for a long time. He's done absolutely nothing for our communities. He's on the wrong side of every major issue up in Washington, D.C. For governor, I'm endorsing Gretchen Whitmer. She didn't do the greatest job with COVID, but I think all of us acknowledge that that was a very stressful time for everyone, and people were trying new things. And other than that, she's done a fairly good job, and her opponent, Tudor Dixon, would be the most racist, pro-capitalistic governor we've had in a long time. For attorney general, Dana Nessel has been the best attorney general this state has had since Frank Kelly. Please vote for Dana. At Secretary of State, we got Jocelyn Benson, and her opponent is just a religious wingnut. So please vote for Secretary of State Benson. State Senator, we have a very, very good candidate in Sue Schink. Please vote for Sue. At the Supreme Court, we got Richard Bernstein and Kyra Harris Bolden. Please vote for these two justices to our Supreme Court. They're both excellent jurists. At the appellate court, Kathleen Fenny is my endorsement. Here in our local district court, Robert Jakie, and at county commissioner, Darius Williams. You'll notice that I didn't say anything about the state legislature, the state house. That's because Derek Dobie's ran a young man called Maurice Imhoff, who four years ago threatened to shoot up his high school and also was gonna reveal conventional photographs of a woman that he was involved in a relationship with at that time. It's only been four years since then, and Derek Dobie's decided to run this young man for the state house. We just lost a house seat that we could have won because of Derek Dobie's poor judgment. And which brings me to the final endorsement for school board, anybody but Derek Dobie's. This man literally just put up someone who was gonna shoot up their high school as a candidate for our state house. What an error in judgment. He's the one who put Nikki Jolie in charge of the NDO and the LGBT organization in this community. And she ended up, he, she, ended up-
Thank you, Peter. John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John King, 2033rd Street here in the city. He was wrong on everything except for Derek Dobie's. Election is two weeks away. The report card on the Democrats shows that inflation and crime is up. Test scores of children are down due to the Democrats' lockdown policies. Opioid deaths are up due to the Democrats' open borders policies. Democrats need to be voted out of office. That includes Michigan's governor, who has put politics first every step of the way to rule as a tyrant, including with her nursing home scandal that led to many deaths and leading the effort to keep kids out of school when we knew early in 2020, children were hardly at risk from COVID. Proposal two is a scheme to take away security from our elections, so it override the requirement that photo ID be needed to vote, along with allowing private individuals and companies to offer big bucks to clerks' offices in an effort to get desired results in elections. Vote no on proposal two. Planned Parenthood's proposal three is an extreme proposal that would amend Michigan's constitution. It is Planned Parenthood's proposal with assistance from the ACLU and support from other pro-abortion groups. It will prevent parents from coming in between their children and Planned Parenthood providing their services. The actual language of the proposed amendment, not the ballot language, starts off, every individual has a fundamental right. It doesn't state adult or woman. Proposal three uses the term healthcare professional rather than medical doctor. This means a broad array of individuals could provide their services, including nurses if a doctor isn't available, or maybe in a pinch, a medical assistant, or even the receptionist could be summoned to the room of death. The doctors and the commercials very well may lose their jobs due to proposal three. Proposal three would allow abortions up until the moment of birth and restricts regulations and sanctions on Planned Parenthood's business. It also means the taxpayers will start picking up the tab for Planned Parenthood services. From abortion to parenting, as the links I sent you would infer, providing puberty blockers, which would cause great harm to children. This is a really sick proposal. I liken it to the pro-abortion rally held here at Blackman Park. Loud applause for every mention of someone stating they had an abortion, not so much for mentions of giving birth, whatever happened to the days of safe, legal, and rare. And it was said here that abortions help careers, but women, black women make over half of abortions, and clearly, they're not enjoying great careers.
Thank you. Tammy Lunsford. Don't be nervous.
I am here because I live in the shelter. They're good, they're wonderful people, but a lady came there yesterday, and they didn't have no beds for her. So I want to know, what can we do to get another shelter? That's what I'm here for. And I just tried killing myself not too long ago. We need more mental things. There's a whole bunch of ADD, not ADD, there's a whole bunch of drug things and counselors and groups. There is none hardly for mental people. I would need to know if we can get some of that, too. And I'm sorry, I have to be at the shelter by 8 o'clock, so I gotta go. Be good?
TJ.
I don't even know what to say after all that. Okay. I just wanted you guys to know that I don't think that you're a shelter or charity. I really had my own building at one time, and I had all this planned out. Well, the building didn't work out. It had black mold, and it wasn't able to hold all the bunk beds that I have. So I really don't ever want, because I really enjoy talking to all of you, John Willis, all of you. Like, I would never come up here and dog your work. I just think that the homeless, I don't know if you guys are really, really aware of how bad it is. I just think that the homeless, it, it, I don't know if you guys are really, really aware of how bad it is. I went down underneath the bridges, and there was twenty-five between the bridge and the tracks of humans. I mean, that, that's just, that's too many. All, just one, one shot that I went down there. Um, they had a homeless camp, and um, they said the city took it down and put it in the dumpster. Well, they all come to my free clothing store, and they don't have no clothes, and everybody comes to me, when are you gonna get a building? When are you gonna get a building? I literally have tried everything, but I'm, I'm trying new ways too. I just really wanted you guys to um, partner up with me so that the coding and all that was right. All, you know, the new beginnings, they tried to open up for women trafficking, uh, younger. That didn't go up because of things that were wrong. Um, I just want help so that I do this right. Um, there's a house on Wilkins Street that's only eighty grand, and the house next to it is condemned, and there's five properties right there. Cuz I really, really, this might sound crazy, but I think that we need a field house. We need something big. We need something to where we can for real support the homeless, where we can have a bunch of offices in this field house that are, all have my back as CAA. Um, United Way, they had my back when I did the temporary shelter at Cavalier. It was too bad that we couldn't keep going on there, but it was the beginning of COVID, so we only got three months there, but we saved lives. We have success stories from that three months. We just really, really need something. Even if we get the house on Wilkins Street, we could put many homes, little homes all down that whole street. There's plenty of room. But I just feel like we gotta do something. We've been blessed with this warm weather right now, but it's getting cold. And I work at Reed Manor at Jackson Housing, and we serve everybody. And so we see it every morning and every afternoon. And I literally was late because I was just dealing with Javon and Debbie that have been at CVS on the corner for, uh, ever. We literally treat our animals better than we have treated them too. And that just makes me so sad. Everybody has seen them on the corner, and there's nothing that anybody can do. I just really think that I wanna work with you guys and not against you guys. I wanna be able to help. It's not TJ problem, it's a city problem, so I really just wanna help.
Thank you.
I didn't even read for my thing. I was just going.
Jeremy Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, one day, need to make a habit of writing down things I'm about to say, cuz I got a lot of thoughts, and I didn't quite put them down. I actually came to say thank you. Uh, Mr. Willis just walked out of the room, so I'll say, tell him again when he comes back in. What is that? Uh, first meeting I came to was about four months ago, just to say thank you to everyone for the prayers and healing, and it was really great. It was really odd on my walk up to that meeting, I actually ran into a gentleman on the sidewalk. Sold me a power chair the next day, actually let me get around all summer. I thanked God, and it was just odd that I came here to the meeting to say thank you, and then God gave me something else. At the same time, I tried to thank him for one thing, and I got more things to thank him from. Well, I sat down at that meeting, and uh, John gave us a great presentation, all about uh, everything that happened on the South Side back in the years. And uh, what happened when uh, basically people weren't allowed to uh, refinance their homes, weren't allowed to, were kicked out of their homes. We all know that. I'm not gonna go through the whole story again. But literally, I left that meeting thinking, uh, one thing I had never really thought about before was, in my position, I thought I was gonna have a three to six month recovery. Now it's looking like maybe a twelve to twenty-four month recovery. I'm not able to work. And until that meeting, I never even thought that, well, I was sitting on an asset. And uh, the next couple of days, called a couple of banks, and I was actually just able to close on a refi a couple of days ago. And at least now I'm able to like, support myself for the next year and a half while I figure out, I don't know if I'm gonna end up on disability or find a new job, new, another way to work. But uh, that meeting had a lot of effect on me. And I started doing a little bit more research on basically that topic, and thinking of things we could do. And obviously, a lot of the banking issues have already been solved, but I really started to think about the people that were kicked out of their homes. And as bad as that situation was, they had homes to be kicked out of. And at that time, and at this time, a lot of people in our city don't have that. And it just got me thinking. I was actually on the phone, got the call from the bank that I was gonna get this refi. And I sat there and just thanked God again. It was oddly, it was the same chair I sat in five years ago when I was talking to God about who was gonna run Prophese against Darren Greer, and I got this little message told me to run. Anyway. Sitting in my chair, thanking God that now because of this refi, I'm not gonna be homeless. Because honestly, for somebody that had the injury that I did, unable to work, that's a lot of times what happens. And I just buried my head and thanked God that I'm not gonna be homeless in the next year or two. And ten minutes later, TJ calls me and says she's working on a project to try to find a way to provide for not just the homeless that we have, but for all the homeless, because we all see it. Um, it's been bad in the last year or two. Um, you just see it more often, camps. Just people out and about, and you see they've got nowhere to go. And a lot of the times, Mr. Mayor, I might be over time, but I'm gonna try to take an extra second. But-
Sorry, brother. Appreciate you. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Ms. Patricia.
I would just like to say that something has to be done. I've been working with the previously homeless, like the people that come out of homelessness, and they finally get a place. And there's so many, there's so many. There's people living in the streets, there's people living in the bridge. You know, there's, there's such a problem here. I've been doing this for seven years, and there's a huge problem here. And it seems like we've all got blinders on, and we don't wanna see it, but it's here. It's here, and we need to do something about it. And the interface shelter can't handle it all. And they have really strict rules. It makes a lot of people not wanna go there. And they need to have a place that's not so strict, that they can feel comfortable. And I think TJ is a person who could help with that, and I think she should be supported.
Martha George.
Hi, um, this is my first time being here. I've been in the city of Jackson since twenty eighteen. I came from Lansing, Michigan. I worked with the homeless population over five years. I work with the veterans, and I have a deep compassion for the homeless. Um, recently, twenty twenty, I decided to fight, um, five oh one three with the IRS. I did receive my uh, five oh one, uh, five oh one three, um, status, and with my nonprofit organization, it's called Love Your Neighbor. With us, I wanna support TJ because we are a small organization. We work with the homeless. We do care. There are some homeless folks then that on the street refuse to get into shelter. We do understand that. Some of it is due to medical problems, some of it is due to just, um, uh, whatever situation that they don't wanna be in. And I think that if the city can work together collectively and come together and support another shelter here, this will help our homeless, uh, population, because when we drive down the road, we see a, a family member with full of clothes, they sleeping on the road, they don't have anywhere to go. And personally, I go out and I give them baskets. I give them essential things that they need, and I ask them if they need clothes, whatever they need. And they say yes. So I do have a closet for men clothes, women clothes, boys clothes, because I'm a single mom with three kids, and I know how it been. I've been came from West Africa, Moroville, Liberia. I was in a war with no food, no clothes at all, so we do have, I do have the compassion to help. So if you guys can just sit here and come together and say, we do need another shelter, that will help eliminate our city and make it more beautiful just walking down this street. Cuz we are not a big city. We are a small, beautiful city, but this will help us a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Davida Quinn.
Good evening. Reese said it, no. Tonight, I know, uh, most of you have heard, we're still talking about the homeless problem. I don't know how many of you all go to the post office. I go to the post office or in that area pretty often. And there's a gentleman sitting there most times. Well, two weeks ago, he was sitting there, and I said, what's wrong? He says, they raided my home. I said, excuse me? He said, they raided my home. I said, they raided your home? What are you talking about? He says, we was down underneath the tracks, and our stuff was down there, and the police came through there, and they took all of our stuff and they threw it away. They raided our home. We're talking about a homeless place underneath the track over by the bridge. So all of their stuff got taken away and threw away. Including the stuff that I had just given him about two weeks prior to that, new sleeping bags, new flashlight, all the things that they need to survive outside. Now, once again, he's left without those things that he needs. I talked with the mayor about it. And I don't know who comes up with the decisions to take away the shelters underneath the bridges or wherever. People may group together to stay. I don't know who's responsible for that. Who does that, those raids and take away their belongings and trash them. I don't know who's responsible for that. But I hope you all know who's responsible for that, and it, it shouldn't happen. It just shouldn't happen to take away all of their belongings. Whether it's the city or the county or whoever does it, I just don't think it's right. They have nowhere else to go. The shelters is full. I call the shelter every day. Do you have any room? Nope, Davida, don't have any room today. Or maybe I have a top bunk where I say, well, I have a senior citizen or a disabled person. They can't take the top bunk. Or I have a woman and two children, on, don't have enough room. Can she leave the kids for her mom or grandma or somebody else? No. We need some additional housing people. And I know we've been talking about it, and I know some things may be in the works, but winter is coming. I work at Jackson Housing Commission, and when the winter comes, all of our hallway doors are open. People are sleeping in the hallways in a, anywhere they can to get out of the cold. Then we have to call the police. We have to be the bad ones.
Thank you. Excuse me, I do believe that concludes all of our public comments at this time. Brings us down to item number eight, petitions and communication from city staff and other governmental entities to be accepted and placed on file. Uh, need a motion in support for item A, CDBG Home and CDBG CV Homeless Prevention Financial Summaries.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to be accepted and placed on file. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, and that passes. Brings us down to item number nine, the consent calendar. Looking for a motion to support on the consent calendar.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Um, any discussion on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The Turkey Trot Event? I was looking at the, the breakdown. It's like a three-hour event. I guess my, my biggest question is the eight hundred dollar item, and I'm not there, of cleaning up. Is that going to create that much need to clean up after then? I think it's, uh,
Nobody gets charged that. It's just our estimated time if we had to do it.
Oh, if we had to?
If we charged them, yeah.
Okay.
But no one gets charged for those things.
Yeah, cuz I, you know, I noticed, I thought that was a little much for just a two-hour event.
Yeah, it's for public works. It's dropping off, uh, street closing barricades, things like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Nick.
Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, passes. Uh, we have no other business, which brings us down to new business. Looking for a motion to support for the approval of a purchase of two patrol vehicles.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Um, any discussion on the item?
I have a quick question.
No, you go ahead, bro. I, I, I had one before.
So I've, uh, I've spoken with Chief Hip before on this. I just wanted to, to ask him publicly. I've, uh, I believe the state police, um, last year or the year before approved an all-electric vehicle um, for police work in the state of Michigan, and I was wondering if we had reviewed that or looked into that at all. It was a Ford Mach-E, I think.
Short answer, no. I, I'm not even aware of the vehicle you're referring to that the state may have approved.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
My question, and maybe I was overreading, um, it, but, um, Chief, we were talking about, did, did we get two vehicles in twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-one, whichever it was? Cuz there were two years in there where we talked about, um, replacing vehicles. Did we replace two last year?
No, we actually ordered three patrol vehicles
Okay.
this time last year, and those are still not in due to the, the the supply chain line and backlog on vehicles, so.
Taking forever to get.
Un- unfortunately, and I've spoken with, with the manager and finance department about this, we're expecting those three to come in this fiscal year. Um, these two tonight, we actually budgeted in the budget that was approved for three. But when we prepared to order these two, the cost has gone up significantly since we, um, received the bids basically January of last year, uh, when we were putting the budget together. So I'm proposing to only order two this year versus the three, uh, so we stay under, under budget with what we budgeted this year. But if those vehicles do come in, the three this year, um, that, there will have to be a budget amendment made. Um, cuz we, we don't pay for the vehicles until they're received. We can't pay ahead of time. Um, so there, most likely, there will be something coming back to council to amend the budget, um, when that happens. And there's a good chance, the two we're ordering, uh, I'm seeking approval for tonight, th- those may not come in this fiscal year either, so will be it will be the next fiscal year, very possibly before the ones were approved tonight, when we put them on order. Um, could be, we're, we're told they're well out beyond six months for sure at this point.
Yeah, I have a friend that's been waiting for months and months for a vehicle, but so that, that means that we will be getting a total of five vehicles.
Yes.
Sometime between this year and next.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Right, brings us down to item B. Looking for a motion to support to approve the change order number one for fire station number two remodel.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
It's been moved and supported.
You guys asked a question.
Any discussion on the item? I heard it might be a question down here. No? Okay. No? Okay. Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right. Brings us to item C, looking for a motion to support for- Brings us to item C, looking for a motion to support for First Amendment two option agreement with pivotal GP Holding LLC, FKA MVH Holding LLC, a Georgia limited liability company.
So move.
Slowly moved and slowly supported. Any questions on this item? Seen or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Brings us down to council member comments. Ooh, mm-mm, no?
We got D and E left.
Yeah, an update.
Oh, yeah, we did-
Okay, something has changed.
There you go.
Okay, my bad. Updated the agenda on me. Okay, item D, changes to the standard, looking for a motion to support for a change, changes to the standard lighting contract for streetlights with Consumers Energy for removal of streetlights in Loomis Park.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions on the item?
Um- Yes.
Yes.
I mean, we're removing the lights. Are we replacing them or?
We're removing these streetlights and when the new park remodeled, we're putting in our own lights.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seen or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. Brings us down to item number E, changes to the standard lighting contract for streetlights with Consumers Energy for removal of streetlights by the Boo Center.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and double supported. Any discussion on this item? Seen or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, now I think we are at city council member comments. Council member Benel?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Council member Big Will?
Just briefly, I did a quick Google search. The Ford Mustang Mach-E passed Michigan State Police pursuit vehicle tests back in 2021. It looks like it still has to go through some additional testing, but I'd just like us to know that and possibly look into that whether you're not. You take the environmental tack on this, whether you care about the environment or not, it may save us money, frankly, to use an all-electric vehicle.
Council member Gud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say thank you to the city for finally taking down the home on Ganson and Forbes. I've gotten calls from people and definitely drive by there a lot myself. And it was just a stark reminder of the tragedy that took place there and it was just a dangerous situation. So thank you. I know it probably took more time than people in Ward Three would have liked, but it was good to see it finally removed.
And Eastside?
Eastside?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, I know last week, Grand Rapids, they passed the ordinance of resolution to build tiny homes. They're doing 15 tiny homes. It's not in the city, it's in the city, but it's in the industrial area. So, and I talked with the city, the city manager and how they went about doing that. And so of course, we've had issues of doing it inside the community. So they found some locations that's, it's in the city, but it's in industrial area locations. So they're doing a trial base to see how that would work. 15 homes, tiny homes, 300 to 500 square feet homes. So I know we talk about, I know we need a lot more, but I know we talk about things like that. And we have discussions about tiny homes and things like that. I think, I know Mr. The Mayor has some ideals and been looking at those. So it's not like the city isn't trying, it's not like we're not looking, it's not like we don't care. We hear, we understand, it does take time, you know, we looking for people who will come in and do the work. What do they call?
Investors.
Well, not just investors, but we need a, what is it, say the word. Contractors to come in and do the work, you know, they come and do the thing. So it's not like we're not trying, Lord knows we trying, we hear it every day, we see it every day. We're not blind to what's going on in the city or in the country, period. So it's not just Jackson, it's everywhere, we know it's everywhere. You know, I was in Hawaii a year ago and I saw people lined up and down the streets homelessness, so I know it's everywhere. So I'd just like to say, we're not blind and I understand. And I know it takes time, I know you don't like to hear that, but we just have to find the, I don't know, the right solution, the right way, but we're looking at tiny homes, we're looking at other different things too. So, you know, with that, I just want to let you know, it is a concern, it's a big concern, it's a concern for everyone and staff and everybody. It's an ongoing conversation. Halloween, trick, or be tricked. The big sad is a big day. I don't want, no crying, no crying. Because after it's over, I don't, no crying. Somebody calling me saying they cheated in the big house. That's all I wanna say, go green!
Make you throw up.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna thank our coordinator, our GVI coordinator. I actually have enjoyed working along with her and see her passion and dedication to the group violence group. And a special thank you to the chief as well for bringing it in, presenting this information to us. I really am hoping that we continue to improve. And of course, we've got COVID year in there and a whole nine yards, but I do think things have calmed down. So it's starting to show. I do want to kinda just stamp what Freddie just said, you know, we do hear that. And we know you're coming and we know the concern, I see it. Because I'm near to downtown, I drive around the city of Jackson that we have the homeless situation. But we are not alone and you're not talking on deaf ears, trust me. I've been talking with the mayor and the city manager and all of us here on this podium or daisies. We hear the need and we know it's out there. And, you know, it won't, it's not gonna change overnight, but know that we are striving to try to be a help. Be a help to this greater Jackson area to support the homeless people out there. That would be it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My allergies are getting to me right now. I don't know how you go 35 years without being allergic to anything and then develop seasonal allergies out of nowhere. But it happened and I'm proof. So I wanna say thank you to the community for your comments and echo what Vice Mayor said and what council member Dancy said, that you are not, your voices are not falling on deaf ears. We definitely appreciate you coming in and continuing to press in on one of our community's most pressing issues. And I think that, you know, what what councilman Dancy was saying, the issue was in Grand Rapids with where to put this this community of small houses. It's kinda the same issue that we have here, right? It's like, well, I don't want them standing in front of my business, but I also don't want them in my neighborhood, but I also don't want them roaming the streets, but I also don't want them outside. And this is not a city of Jackson issue as in like the government. This is actually the community of Jackson issue as in everyone in our entire city should feel some responsibility to help with this issue. Especially those who are literally existing to work and help the homeless community instead of reducing the number of the beds that they have in their existing organizations and establishments. To me, I will just share this, and I've not been shy about this. Prior to being mayor, and I'm not gonna be shy about it now. The homeless issue is something that is personally important to me. I just wanna say that and reiterate that, being a person who experienced being homeless, staying at the interface shelter and looking above me in the bunk bed that I was sleeping in and watching the roaches crawl. I can still see it right now. This is not an issue that I take lightly, and it is something that we are diligently working on. But as was stated, there is no overnight issue or solved to this situation. There's no overnight solve to this situation, but I do think that we're going to be able to come up with a solution that we will be able to execute prayerfully before the snow flies. That is my goal, because the last thing that I wanna see is people who I know, because I've known a lot of these people. People like Huey, who is not gonna go into the shelter because he doesn't wanna be around people. So when I say I know, not only did I live there, did my mother manage the interface shelter for 18 years. So I know most of the chronically homeless people who are not going to just go into a shelter. And I visibly see the other individuals who we have roaming around the streets as well. They're not invisible to me. I always stop and I speak and I think that's part of our community's issue, is they don't even treat people like people. And thank you whoever said that we are treating our animals better than we treat human beings. Because I agree in a lot of ways. But we working on it. Okay? That's, say that to say that, we working on it. Mr. City Manager?
In two weeks, we will have an election. And I know that our city clerk, her staff and all the wonderful volunteers who spend their day helping people vote are going to make sure that the city of Jackson and the results of the votes that are done here in the city will be accurate and without compromise. And I would like to thank DPW member of all people who did his part to help people vote and understand how it works. There's a ballot box outside that needed some wording changed. And Devin Smith, maintenance worker here for the city of Jackson, sprung into action and coordinated with our clerk, Andrea Marie, to change the lettering on it. And I wanted to thank Devin specifically for doing that and doing his part in helping democracy work. So thank you, Devin, and have a good night.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to-
So move. So move, so move.